All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the September 7th, 2023, special meeting of the Luzerne County Board of Elections and Registration for the Proposed County Council Charter Amendment Valid Question. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence. We'll have roll call. Ms. Fusaro, Mr. Mangin, Mr. Schramm, Ms. Sernea, and Ms. Williams, here, all present. I'd like to notify the public that the board has had three executive sessions. Two were on Thursday, August 31st, one from 10:00 a.m. to 10:50 a.m., and one from 6:00 p.m. to 6:42 p.m. Both were to discuss litigation on the proposed ballot question. The third executive session was held on Tuesday, September 5th, from 11:40 to 11:59 a.m. It was also to discuss the proposed ballot question litigation. No deliberations took place. Is there a motion to adopt this special meeting agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Fusaro, is there a second?
Oh, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Mangin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Opposition? None heard. The special meeting agenda is adopted. We'll now move into the public comment on agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters listed on the agenda, which is only the only is the only one item, which is the, not the certification, it's the ballot question. And it's limited to three minutes and one comment time per person, please. We'll start with those who are in person. And if you'd like to speak, you'll go to the podium and state your name and municipality. Is there anyone in person who would like to speak? Go right ahead. Mr. Henninger?
Thank you. My name is Alan Henninger. I live in Dallas Township. I'd like to speak in opposition to the proposed addition to this ballot question. I believe it is, this particular question is fatally flawed as written. I think it's disguised. I'm disappointed that I haven't seen anything in, in writing or in digital media to describe the fraud that I have seen. I will bring it up just to see if it's indeed been in the discussion. First off, the question in my mind that we're, we're working on is not whether the council should be voting on, on all five members. That, I believe, hides a fatal portion in one of the other changes that's going to come about that people are not allowed to vote on independently. And two of those items, one is, I think it is a disservice to the voters and citizens of Luzerne County to remove the section from the current charter stating that board members are not to be a member or to be enlisted on the ballot. Okay, that's coming off if this amendment passes and shows up on the ballot and passes. But the big one that I see is that by voting for all five members and leaving in place subsection E. of four of section 804, that section reads that when the vacancy happens on the board, the replacement must be a member of the same political party as the one being vacated. So if the council is voting for all five members, they're required to have two from the prevailing party, two from the second party. So we're going to say two from the Republican, two from the Democratic Party, and then one from any party they would choose. The problem with that is whatever party is in a majority for council is most likely going to be that member. So therefore, there would be, in this case, three members from the Republican Party, two from the Democratic. And if any member of the five should leave at any time for the rest of the term of this charter, they must be replaced by the same party. So therefore, you have a 3-2 majority in perpetual control of the certification of the votes in Luzerne County. I think that's a fatal flaw.
Thank you. Anybody else in person who'd like to speak, go ahead?
I agree with Mr. Henninger as well on the, and I voice this opinion since this ordinance has been passed by council. I think it's a poorly drafted piece of legislation that this board is now forced to act on. I think it's unfair to the board to have to do that. I think that the ordinance should have been drafted properly in the first place. Unfortunately, it wasn't. To Mr. Henninger's point, I do believe there's also fatal flaws in there. The, the one section of the ordinance that clearly says that the council has to, or the Board of Elections has to pick their chair and vice chair by February, on February 1st as a reorganizational meeting. We'll be doing that with four members because the charter in 802 says, in order to put the fifth member there, they actually have to advertise it, create a list to get the peoples that they're going to pick for that fifth position. They don't just pick somebody in January and say, this is the person who's the fifth member. There's a process in our charter that requires them to post it, create a list, do interviews. That all has to be done prior to appointing the fifth member. That will never happen by February 1st. We currently have multiple boards in this county that don't have a full complement of members because this council has not acted on those, filling no seats. What possible way do they think that the council will vote to get a full complement of board members by February 1st at the end of this election if we're unfortunate enough to get this question passed? I don't think the electorate is that naive that they would even pass it. I think it's a moot point. I think they certainly would not vote for it. But in the event that they do, we would be functioning in an election that will probably happen in April with a board that maybe got appointed in March. It's very, very dangerous. And we're trying to clear up that image in this county of election integrity. That we have a new director, we have a new staff that's working their tails off to do things right in this county. And what are we going to do? We're going to throw another monkey wrench in their day to try and make them figure it out again. And then when it doesn't go right, they'll get blamed again or this board will get blamed, but nobody else will. And that's unfortunate. I don't think that that's fair. And Title 53 clearly says that the, you have to frame the question and you have to also check to make sure it is in the proper order before you frame the question. So if I was a circulator of a petition and I circulated this petition as a citizen and brought it to this board, they would never accept that petition. That would never happen because it's not in the proper order. So what makes it any different for an ordinance of council? So this board needs to vote no to frame the question due to the not being in proper order and direct, and it's in direct conflict with the charter provisions. And, and there's no specific language in the ordinance that also allows a board member to run for office. They've taken the clause out that says if you're a board member, you can't run for office, but they didn't put anything in the new ordinance that says you can. They didn't put anything in there. They just said that if you were, they took that section out. So there's no provisions in the new ordinance that says you can run for office and be a board member. That's an assumption that we're making. Somebody can challenge that and probably win. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in person? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa Nippersky. I'm from Fairview Township. I'm also here to speak in opposition of the ballot referendum. The question is not in proper order and therefore should not be certified for the following reasons. Even the most recently submitted version of the referendum is extremely confusing and does not clearly outline the drastic changes that would take place if the referendum were to pass. The question asks only if council should be permitted to appoint all five election board members, while other provisions can only be found in a lengthy explanation of ballot, which here is, and that will not appear anywhere on the ballot for voters to see. Voters who did not attend council meetings or election board meetings or who don't subscribe to one of our local newspapers would not, would have no way of knowing they're being asked to give council its wish, which is to dismantle the entire sitting election board only months before a presidential election. Additionally, one of the provisions is in direct conflict with PA Election Code. As previously pointed out, the referendum would permit city board members to run for office. The deadline to finalize the ballot for mail-in voters is in four days, and the deadline for military ballots has already passed. With all the conflicts and confusion, I urge the election board not to certify this referendum and to refer it back to council for clarity prior to resubmitting the question for any future elections. This is nothing more than an attempt by council to deflect blame for their mismanagement of the Bureau of Elections, which many voters don't realize is county-run and completely separate from our independent Board of Elections that is comprised of citizen volunteers. I said it before and I'll say it again. It's not out of the realm of possibility that the 2024 presidential election could come down to proper adjudication of the Luzerne County election results. Do we really want this job handed to five new appointees with zero experience who are beholden to council? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in person?
My name is Diane Dreyer. I'm from Dallas. There are many reasons why the proposed restructuring of the election board is a really bad idea for all citizens of Luzerne County, whether they be Republican, Democrats, or independents. In my opinion, this ballot question is a blatant attempt to exert near total control over the election board. The election board is now structured to be as nonpartisan as humanly possible. With these proposed changes, the election board decisions could be skewed to the will of the council majority. But tonight's meeting is about process. And the process of significantly restructuring something as important and as central to our democracy as an election board should not be rushed, not even by those who are determined to push through these changes as quickly as possible. The central question is, will the electorate be able to absorb and understand the eight or so significant issues in a ballot question in 30 seconds? 30 seconds is the time that it takes the average reader to read 75 words, the amount of words in the ballot question. And even though a more detailed explanation will be posted at polling places, how many voters really will take the time to read that detailed explanation? I would respectfully request that the election board not approve this ballot question in its present form. It should at least be separated into eight separate questions on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in person? Go ahead.
My name is Andrea Lawden from Wokesbury. I believe the question on the amendment is not what is considered proper order. And I think that's because of several reasons. I think first of all, aside from the council assuming the authority to appoint all five board members to the election board, several other changes appear, but only in the explanation of the ballot question, making it very likely that voters will assume that they are voting on only that change. I think that's a form of voter disenfranchisement. Also, it applies the amendment conflicts with the Pennsylvania Election Code. It would permit sitting board members to run for elected office. And if what I'm reading in the newspaper is correct, there's nothing in the, in the proposal to provide a remedy for that conflict. And finally, and this is the thing I think I find the most upsetting. I thought the council did a very good job when we had problems with the election year and they asked the DA to investigate what was going on. And I think the DA concluded that the problems were mostly caused because we had lost institutional knowledge. I think it was within a week of the DA's report that this amendment was brought forward by the council and all it does is decrease the intellectual institutional knowledge that we currently have. And so finally, I think voters, in fact, will be disenfranchised, but only if the referendum does appear on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in person? We'll move to the Zoom platform. Is there, if there's anybody on the Zoom platform forum who would like to speak, you can click the raise hand button at the bottom. I see, go ahead, Ms. Glennon. State your name and municipality.
I'm Claudia Glennon from Salem Township. Can you hear me?
A little bit louder. You could.
I'm Claudia Glennon. Hello? Is it coming through now?
But it's not real loud. I don't know if that's on our end or if it's on your end. We're just going to check here just a second to see. It might be here in the room that, that volume needs to be raised. Okay, Ms. Glennon, go ahead and try again.
Okay. Is this better?
Perfect, thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm Claudia Glennon from Salem Township. And first, I want to thank this election board for professionally weathering the slings and arrows of outrageous comments and accusations amid the misplaced anger, which rightly should be directed to county councils' failures to adequately fund and staff the election bureau and county managers' offices. You have continued to diligently work for fair and just elections as well as ensuring voting access for all eligible Luzerne County residents. It's my opinion that this charter amendment changes proposed by Luzerne County Council reflect personal vendettas of council members and are not in the best interest of constituents nor the best use of county time and resources. Currently, the Board of Elections must attain bipartisan consensus in electing its chair. This will be obliterated, resulting in increased partisan conflict. Plainly stated, this change will allow whoever or whichever party controls county council to place three members of their party on the election board. As three constitutes a quorum, in essence, there will be no reason for the other two board members to even show up. This is not democracy and not what our county charter drafters intended when they wrote, quote, "In the spirit of efficient progress and to prevent abuse of power, this charter establishes separations of executive and legislative powers." But most that's concerning is the fact that the entire current board would be dismissed within 30 days after enactment. Substantial institutional knowledge will be lost, leaving us with new inexperienced board during a contentious presidential election year to boot. Furthermore, I'm of the opinion that this amendment is not in proper order. The first draft was wholly inadequate. The second attempt submitted only days ago is extremely confusing, delineating numerous changes to be made through sweeping, overreaching provisions which have not been understandably distilled for the average voter. I have heard Mr. Lombardo and Mr. Woolovich say, quote, "Let the voters decide." I say, how can the voters possibly decide? One cannot know what one does not know, or rather, what they are not being told. Posted pages of plain language explanation along with, this is what you have, this is what you'll get, does not educate the voter. So tell me exactly how can the voter decide? Additionally, a provision of this amendment appears to be in conflict with PA Election Code allowing sitting election board members to run for elected office. Dare I say, fox in the hen house? Judge Gell stated, "Democracy cannot be rushed." I say, we shall not let it be subverted by elected council members trying to grab political control from an autonomously functioning board, so designed by our charter. I urge you to vote no on the priority of the proposed county council charter amendment ballot question. Thank you.
Thank you. Katerina Gareda.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Katerina. I live in Kingston. This charter amendment is manipulative and sneaky. Even as someone who has reread the explanation of the amendment multiple times, I still do not fully understand the legal wording. The majority of Luzerne County voters will not take the time to read it or to understand it. I believe it is unfair to cram eight different amendments under the guise of one singular amendment. And I believe that this amendment is not in proper order. Please take this amendment off the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Raybo?
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Mark Raybo of Hazleton. I would like to delve into the constitutionality of this ballot referendum question. I said in the beginning of this folly of a question, and I will continue to say it until it is defeated, that this question subverts the state constitution, specifically Article 6, Section 7, when it comes to boards and elected, appointed, appointed and elected officials as dissolving a board without legal justification is by definition a backdoor recall referendum, which is prohibited in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So therefore, that provision by itself, the dissolving of the board, is unlawful and illegal under constitutional norms. So therefore, that by itself should be taken out, number one. Number two, with respect to, you know, the other, the ballot question in the format that it's in, if you look at all the other home rule charter counties with their boards of election, they, anytime there's a, anytime there's an individual change in their charter, they addressed it in each individual question, each individual ballot question. So if there's eight changes, as in this proposed ballot question, there should be eight separate questions, not eight changes in one question. So therefore, it would behoove the Board of Elections and Registration to separate the changes proposed in, in each, making each individual change one singular question. That would be the right answer. And if you need any examples, look at Philadelphia. They've had two years back to back of proposed charter changes, which, by the way, Madam Chair, Philadelphia, as you and the board would know, is not only the largest county in our state, but it is also the first home rule county in our state. So if they set the bar, why aren't the, why isn't Luzerne County following that, you know, that blueprint that's already established? I don't get it. So I think what needs to happen is the Board of Elections and Registration should separate each proposed change into each individual question and have the county make the proposed clarification in simple language as, as provided for by home rule optional plan law. So that is, that is my take. And I would like to commend the board on its steadfastness and its, and its resolve. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Karen? Go ahead, Karen.
I'd just like to say.
If you could state your name and your municipality, please.
My name is Karen Pianka, and I'm from Wokesbury, PA, Ward A. I'm just, I'm just upset about this. In 2012, we made a charter just for this reason, not to monkey around with our Board of Elections, Bureau of Elections. These people do due diligence. Right now, just because they don't like that it's 3-2 doesn't mean it's going to stay that way forever. We have limited time where these folks just step back. They're not going to be on that board forever. I don't understand why they need to change it right now, immediately. I would say, please vote no on this additional question. And don't even think about it for the primaries. It, it's just not right. I, I mean, I'm having a hard time understanding this, why, why they're doing this or what it means. So, and I'm just a regular voter that doesn't get all this stuff. Thanks. Thank you for your hard work, too.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up on the Zoom platform. So I'm going to move into, we have several emails that were received and requested to be read into, onto, into the record. First is from Jay Notar Tomaso from, from West Wyoming. My name is Jay Notar Tomaso, and I'm a resident of Luzerne County for 38 years. Tonight is a very important night for our county, and I encourage all five members of the board to continue your recent careful consideration of the ramifications of the amendment question you will be voting on tonight. I have been following the ongoing dilemmas you have been dealing with the past two years with much concern. The fact that we have one of the most diverse boards with respect to political differences has not gone unnoticed. The fact that all five of you are now in agreement about the big mistake voting for this amendment question will be is a testament to your correct position. The fact that the real problems our county has had with regards to mistakes around elections is due to a lack of institutional knowledge and experience and that you five have been, all been through enough to see the truth of this is much appreciated by the voters. The fact is that the amendment is already too long, confusing and misleading, and still incomplete and not in proper order. Gives you no choice but to vote against it. The fact is, the amendment is also in violation of PA Election Code regarding board members being allowed to run for office, and that is just one violation. The fact is, Luzerne County Council is obsessed with meddling with the rec, elections and confusing and disenfranchising voters instead of doing their job. Please do the right thing and vote against this improper amendment and stand in strong support of an impartial, experienced board of election that voters on all sides of the political spectrum deserve. The next one is from Brian Dugas from Wyoming Borough, to whom it may concern. This email is in regards to the proposed charter amendment. In trying to decipher the language and intentions of this amendment, it is very clear that it is confusing and designed to take authority away from the Board of Elections and give it to the county council. It is the Board of Elections' responsibility to oversee the free and fair elections of this county. Efforts to change the board, especially at this late date, will introduce partisanship and impact the democratic process that the county council should be protecting. As an active poll worker who worked the polls over the last few years and who volunteered to transcribe the votes that were not appropriately counted, I am fully aware of where the responsibility lies for the issues we have recently faced in Luzerne County elections. Perhaps it would be wise for the county council to focus on those issues rather than the Board of Elections, which effectively dealt with the problems it was handed. Michael and Deborah Velash from Franklin Township. We are residents of Luzerne County and wish to voice our objection to the proposed Home Rule Charter Amendment. Thank you.
My name is Carol Shearer. I reside in Butler Township. I am writing to voice my concerns about the ballot question that would amend the Luzerne County Rule, Home Rule Charter. I ask the Board of Elections to reject the question as it is currently written. As Judge Lisa Gell said during the September 5th, 2023 hearing, democracy cannot be rushed. We are days away from the deadline for finalizing ballots. The deadline for military and overseas ballots has already passed, yet there is still no clarity on what Luzerne County voters will be voting on. Furthermore, a newly drafted question was only submitted to the Board of Elections a few days ago. Both questions are confusing and in no way understandable to the average voter. Voters like myself deserve a clear and understandable ballot question if we are going to be asked to vote on such drastic changes to our county government. We deserve to know and understand the consequences that would result from the passage of this amendment, and we deserve the right to make an informed decision. I do not believe that this question, as currently drafted, meets the I do not believe that this question as currently drafted meets those criteria. I also believe that this amendment raises issues and questions that have yet to be answered. In particular, I am concerned about the deletion of the prohibition in the charter regarding sitting members of the Board filing to run for office. I feel that this is an issue with ethical and legal implications that have not been adequately addressed. Placing this question on the November ballot may be a top priority for county council, but it is not a top priority for voters like myself. Once again, as I've stated in prior emails to council, the people of Luzerne County have real needs, needs like affordable housing, repaired roads and bridges, good paying jobs, resources to fight the opioid epidemic, safe green space for kids and families, and a functioning county government. We do not need to waste precious time and taxpayer money working on a convoluted amendment to the county's Home Rule Charter that was only introduced because council wants to vacate the current independent and volunteer Board of Elections. I therefore ask the Board of Elections to not vote to certify the ballot question as currently drafted.
My name is Alicia Hoffman Miralovich. I am Executive Director of Action Together NEPA and a Fairview Township resident. I wish to voice my concerns about the Luzerne County Charter Amendment ballot question. Please vote to not certify this question as it is currently drafted. We are frankly still called by the county council's partisan in misleading charter amendment, which includes a provision that vacates the entire Board of Elections next year, right before a presidential election. This would be a devastating loss of institutional knowledge for a county with the lowest paid election staff in the country. This amendment, if adopted, would remove members from the Board who have more experience overseeing elections than anyone in senior bureau leadership. The Luzerne County Council once again is scapegoating the Board of Elections for the dysfunction and confusion that they have created. This attempt to distract voters from council's failures to lead and deliver for the people is painfully obvious. It is not difficult to look at the recent problems in Luzerne County's elections and reach the following conclusion, that substantial changes to the way the Elections Bureau is funded and run are needed to keep dedicated, well-qualified staff there and create an environment of leadership and competence that will increase voters' faith in our elections. Our organization cares deeply about any potential disenfranchisement or issues that could impact voting, advocating for government at every level to support and fully fund our elections. County Council should be taking steps toward fully funding county elections and changing the pattern of high turnover and instability in Luzerne County's Election Bureau. Luzerne County has had four elections directors and one interim election director between 2019 and the end of 2022. In addition, since August 2020, the Bureau has had five different deputy directors. The chronic turnover in this critical office and lack of institutional memory creates instability that leads to breakdowns in procedures. The District Attorney agrees District Attorney Sam Sangraducci's investigation of the paper shortage that occurred in the 2022 election found it was staff turnover and the subsequent lack of experience that led to the issues. Lack of training, experience, and consistency were to blame for the shortage, not any failure by the volunteer Board of Elections. As Judge Gelb wrote in her order on September 5th, 2023, this issue is significant not merely to both parties, but to every citizen of Luzerne County. The Board of Elections oversees issues concerning free and fair elections that are fundamental to our democracy. Any changes must be taken seriously, thoughtfully, and with careful consideration of all party submissions. These issues should not be rushed through without proper briefing and argument. We have a system in place in Luzerne County that can work if it's properly funded and resourced. Progress is being made between the Board of Elections and Bureau of Elections to devise a calendar of procedures to create safeguards and reduce the possibility of errors. It is this progress that the county council is seeking to endanger. We thank the Board for your countless hours of work and your dedication to carrying out Luzerne County's free and fair elections. As Judge Gelb said during Tuesday's hearing, democracy can't be rushed. Since this amendment was introduced, county council has turned a deaf ear to the opinions of the people they are elected by and trusted to represent. The people of Luzerne County have real needs, affordable housing, repaired roads and bridges, good paying jobs, a functioning county government. They don't need a convoluted, misleading amendment to the county's Home Rule Charter that was only introduced because the council wants to vacate the current independent and volunteer Board of Elections before a presidential election. Voters deserve a clear and understandable ballot question if they are being asked to vote on such drastic changes, and they deserve to know and understand the consequences if the amendment passes. Please vote to not certify this question as it is currently drafted. Kay Strickland from Kingston Township. I do not believe that the county council's charter amendment is good for voters of Luzerne County. It lets the council appoint all five members of the Board of Elections, taking away the Board's right to independently elect its chair. It removes all members in 2024, causing an exodus of institutional memory during the presidential election cycle. It lowers the fifth member's term from four years to two years, another loss of institutional memory. Furthermore, the amendment is actually many questions being framed as one. Confusing language should not be allowed on the ballot ever, and such an important set of changes should be discussed in multiple public forums before ever being suggested as ballot questions. Please do what you can to stop this amendment from appearing on the November ballot. Anita Davis and it's Plains Township. I am protesting the move of the Luzerne County Commissioners to change the way that members of the election board are selected. It grieves me to see the attempt of one party to control our elections. I've seen how brainwashed our local citizens are at the meeting to throw the last election out. I believe that it was not thrown out because of one council member that was chosen by the people. I want to live in a democracy, not a county controlled by one party. Leave the election board selection as it is. Is it not enough the county has brought themselves a new ballot sorting machine to throw out mail ballots, mail-in ballots due to technicalities? Also ensure the polling stations have their paper. That was the last one. Okay. What's that?
Anyone on the phone?
No one's on the phone. No, no phone lines. Okay. We'll now move into our agenda item, which is the proposed county council charter amendment ballot question. We'll hear from all the board members. I'll start, and then we can move to each and everyone. With the agenda was posted the most recent revised, proposed county council ballot question. I think there were some also handed out to everyone, but there was also posted under the agenda on the county website for everyone to see. In Pennsylvania Title 53, Section 2944, which states the time and manner of submission, it's written, "A referendum on the question of the amendment of a home rule charter or an optional plan of government shall be held when the election officials find that the initiative petition or ordinance of the governing body is in proper order." We are the board, we, the board, are the election officials, and we have a duty and obligation for this statute to certify for the ballot, any ballot questions when we find that they are in proper order. Since I've been on this board, when we've been tasked with something, say, the adjudication process, we take our role very seriously. I've worked alongside of each and every one of these members, and we go down into the weeds. We're very thorough. We're very meticulous. We're very methodical about how we address every issue and all the tasks at hand. And we are doing the same here, and we have them. In Judge Gelb's September 5th ruling, some of the public commenters mentioned it. She did write that this issue is significant not merely to both parties, but to every citizen in Luzerne County. "The Board of Elections oversees issues concerning free and fair elections that are fundamental to our democracy," she said. She also was quoted as saying, "Any changes must be taken seriously, thoughtfully, and with careful consideration of all party submissions." There, "These issues should not be rushed through without proper briefing and argument." "In our role of election oversight, this board is doing and has been doing its due diligence with this proposed ballot question. We have had legitimate questions and concerns about this proposed ballot question not being in proper order." I note several issues, fatal flaws, in this latest version sent to the Board from the County Office of Law. First, I do believe that it's a change in the structure of government. Two, I believe it's a violation of the single-subject rule. And three, I believe it's a violation of the Election Code, the conduct of elections, when a ballot question states that it allows for the Board of Election Members to run for office. There are also additional multiple issues within the ballot question as well. For one thing, it does not even include in the question for the voters. It states reduced political party affiliation to three years, but doesn't even include, or since the person has been registered to vote. That's not included in the ballot question, but it is in the ordinance. It says, has a line, "Except election workers," and that's very, very confusing to me. I take that as election workers are excluded from this change from four years to two years. It, I, maybe the intention was to say, they don't, that this doesn't apply to them. But to me, they're totally excluded and not a part of this equation at all. So, and there's no way you could add, or since the person's been registered to vote, because the question has already had exactly 75 words. But the main thing to me is, the more serious violations, but there are multiple flaws, but the very serious ones are, are the violation of the Electric Code and the Code of Conduct of Elections, which the Home Rule Law states that any charter amendments cannot affect the conduct of elections, which is state law, and this charter amendment does. So I believe that we must reject this proposed ballot question. Anybody else? Go ahead.
So, um. I typed everything up to be a little more proficient, so I don't ramble, because you guys know I love to ramble. This is a very difficult task as a board member. I can't speak for everyone else, but I can speak for myself when I say that I had to put aside all personal feelings when looking at this referendum question. What I mean by this is I could have easily follow party lines and vote to swing this board, because that's essentially what it is, is a vote to swing this board. In my opinion. It'd be easier to just accept it and vote to put this on the ballot. Many know, many of you know, in the, even just here, know of, of the abuses, the attacks, the accusations that I, and then actually somebody mentioned it tonight, Claudia Glennon mentioned it, that I and others on the board have endured while serving on this board. Many have gone uninvestigated even, okay? And I'm not even sure if the public is aware, but we're the only board commission, committee in which our key texts don't even work, and we're required to pass through security prior to entering any county building. There's a reason why I'm getting to this. It would be much easier on me and many of us to just give up on this, okay? Because we are attacked. We are set aside. We are, we are really put through the wringer by serving on this board. But we have made, each of us have made a commitment to serve this public, the public, and to do it lawfully. As a quasi judicial board, we must take our decisions, make our decisions based on the law, and we need to adjudicate in such a manner that we follow Pennsylvania state law, the Pennsylvania State Constitution and the US Constitution. There is no doubt that the question is flawed, okay? But in review of Pennsylvania State Charter Law and the handbook, we as the board must formulate the ballot referendum question or questions. It's spelled out in Title 53, 2944, last sentence for anybody who's looking that up. If we were going to formulate this question, or questions as it were, in doing so, we would need to review the presented question and reword it if necessary. But to do so, we would have to look, first look at the legality of the amendment as a whole, okay? And it's important to mention that a few days ago, Lehigh County Board of Elections rejected a referendum question based on its legality. Though it was a petition, and they are home rule charter too, it's important to mention that. Though it was a petition of amendment referendum question, okay, which means the people presented it, its legality was still called a question and rejected by their Board of Elections. First, to me, it seems that this serves as a, as Luzerne County Council's, which somebody did mention it tonight, Luzerne County Council's attempt at a backdoor recall, okay? That is illegal in Pennsylvania. You cannot recall a position and/or board because you don't agree with their stance, their policy, or even particular members, or a particular member or members, okay? Second, I looked at whether or not this could be considered a structural change of the charter. So as we all know, a structural change to the charter would require a government study commission, okay? The problem is, what do we deem a structural change when the law is extremely vague on this? So I went back to basics. I Googled it. And I Googled structural change definition, and here's the first definition that I came up with. Structural change, changes include major shifts in the management hierarchy, team organization, responsibilities attributed to different departments, the chain of command, job structure, and administrative procedures. Under this definition, reconstituting the board is definitely a structural change. You see, you can't have a power shift, especially in the government or any governmental entity, without it being considered a structural change, correct? So no matter what way you slice it, this entire referendum question shifts the power and therefore would be considered a structural change. Finally, I mirror Denise's concerns with the election law stating that you can't run for office while serving on the board. So for me, there was really no need to go into the questions, dive in and decide, well, should we, should we restructure these? Should we try to figure this out? Should we try to piecemeal this together and put them into maybe five or six questions? Make it easy for the public to try to understand it, because legally it's completely unsound. And I cannot in good conscience approve this amendment, and I would, and I would reject it, honestly, if the people came and it came through as a petition amendment from the people, because for the same exact reasons, because legally it's not sound. And I don't feel, you know, us as the quasi judicial board that we are, I feel that this is just not, it, it could be challenged in court. I don't feel that it's proper. So that's all I have to say.
A lot of things have been said, and I, I've noticed a lot of the same things too when I was looking through this to try to find it. One of the first things I did when I first saw it was, it is so long. It was like reading War and Peace. It took me four years to read it, and it took Tolstoy two years to write it. This was so long and so confusing, and I kept looking to try to find out if there was anything that we could pull apart of it, keep it, write it up because we're supposed to make it. I couldn't decide actually what they were trying to do to accomplish what they wanted to, other than they wanted to get rid of everybody and start all over. Bring in all new people so that they can say that, oh, it's because we didn't have new people, why something went wrong. But that's my personal opinion, whether they wanted to get rid of me or not, it doesn't matter. I wanted to see whether or not this should pass mustard and actually be on the ballot. And my conclusion was it shouldn't be. It has too many flaws, too many things that are wrong. To sit there and tear things apart and try to correct them, there were two, there's too many things to correct. And actually, that should have been the way they presented it. Their responsibility was to present what you wanted to. This would be like you submitting an essay to your English teacher, and the English teacher correcting it for you and saying, here, I'll give you an A now because I corrected everything you did wrong. And it may be ours, but I don't know exactly what it is they were trying to appeal, or even why they were doing it. That was one of the things I haven't heard is why did this suddenly come down the pipe? But I also looked at one of the things that really got me when I was looking at getting on the Board of Elections under the new charter. All you have to do is register to vote. As soon as you register to vote, you can be put on the Board of Elections. You can be 17 years old, register to vote in the next election, and you can be on the Board of Elections. You only have to be 18 to register to vote, to vote. But to be eligible to vote, you just have to be 18 on the day of the election. But to be eligible to vote, you just have to be 18 on the day of the election. That to me was too many easy people to be swung around and put in a place of they're going to pick everybody for one. But in my looking at everything else, I couldn't find nothing good at all to say about the amendment. That this shouldn't be approved at all. It should be reworked and come back out in May primary if they fix it. Because it may take three or four months to actually fix it and get it to go right, the way it should read and the way it should be done. To accomplish something in a democratic way so that it all understands what it is they want to do. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go next. Okay. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what's already been said. I, I've listened to counsel, I've listened to opposing counsel, I've listened to the judge, I have, I have read things, I have gone through codes. I've listened to a lot of discussion and this is not something we take lightly, has been stated. Many of my waking hours in the last couple of weeks have been consumed, be consumed by this question. We want to be fair about it. I don't want to, I need to, I tried to best to separate my personal opinions about that around the whole situation. And again, like everyone else, I've come to the conclusion that it is fatally flawed. There's no way we really can sever some of parts of it out enough to fix it. We can't put, I don't see how we could put language in that says, okay, if you're a board member, you can't run while you're a board member. I don't, I don't think we can include that. I, I just don't see any way that this should be. It's long, it's confusing. There's a lot of wording in it that is not clear at all. You can maybe guess that maybe that's what it means, but it doesn't really say that. So I, I don't see this, I don't see this going forward at this time.
I appreciate the input from all the people that attend our meetings. I appreciate the people that call in, people that send their emails. I read them all when I listen to you. The advantage that the voting citizenry has is that you can express your opinions and how you feel about this. We as a board are faced with the complication of viewing everything in front of us totally objectively. I have certain feelings about some of these questions and remarks, but I cannot allow them to be involved when I make my choices. With that being said, I have stood next to these people in a number of elections now. Partisanship has never played a role in any decision we worked through on election day. You've never heard the word Democrat or Republican. You've never heard anything that was controversial. We work together as a team. I cannot sit here and pretend that I understand what the intent was behind this, this document. I, I struggled to find some peace with it. I looked at the revised question that was put forward by the office of law last week. Initially, I found that much more satisfactory. But then after careful review, after the hearing with Judge Gelb, given better direction. And then over the course of the last few days with just things that are, that are still evolving with it. I only see this going two ways for me personally, and I, and I'm unsure about that even. One is to not certify it at all. But I don't like the idea of kicking the can down the road either. We have this in front of us. You know, we've been given a task. We have to work with the bureau to meet their deadlines. We have to be respectful of that. But here's another issue that I brought up the other day. Yes, this may be posted at a polling place, but the 17,000 people in Luzerne County that got mail-in ballots, will this be included with that for them to read before they get to vote? My options are simple. Either it's broken down into separate questions or we vote to not certify it at all. I, I think it's too convoluted and as I said at the last meeting, I would, I would skip over this question if I were voting today. And that still remains to be the case for me. So again, looking at it all objectively, I'm not going to try to read minds. What, what is their intent? I'm looking at it from a totally objective point of view. And I, I would have to right now at this point say no.
Any further discussion from any board members? Go ahead. Motion to reject proposed county council charter amendment ballot question. Ms. Fissaro makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Mangan. Roll call vote. Mr. Schramm?
Yes.
Ms. Cerniak?
Yes.
Ms. Fissaro?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Yes. The motion passes unanimously to reject the proposed ballot question. And now move into public comment on non-agenda items. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters not listed on the agenda, but which must be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. The microphone's on, I believe. We'll start with any in person. Anybody in person who would like to speak? Okay. If there's anybody online, Anita? Davis? Go ahead. Just unmute yourself. Anita Davis? I think you'll need to unmute Ms. Davis. Okay, well, we'll hold off. Mr. Raybo?
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Mark Raybo Hazelton. First, I want to applaud the board's brave and stalwart decision to reject the ballot referendum question. You know, I, I said what I needed to say from the beginning, but I would just end it with this note. The reason I was strongly opposed to this ballot question referendum from the beginning, not only does it subvert the state constitution and home rule optional plan law, but it also, Madam Chair and members of the board, sets a very dangerous precedent moving forward, if, if the ballot question were to move forward, in the sense that not only would it affect the board of elections and registration presently, and not only would it affect it in the future, but this would have an irrevocably dangerous and negative impact on all county authorities, boards and commissions. In the sense that it would deter very willing and also very passionate individuals who want to serve this county to actually participate in our home rule government, which is the reason, one of the reasons why this home rule government was put into place in the first place. And I truly believe that this ballot question referendum would actually subvert also and is a negative and actually obliterates recommendation number seven, Madam Chair, because home rule, the home rule study commission, and I see Controller Griffith, who was the member of the home rule study commission present. He would tell you that recommendation number seven was one of the catalysts and reasons why home rule was put to the people in the first place to get rid of cronyism, nepotism, favoritism, and to use board positions as favors, for political favors. Okay. So I don't understand how that question complements home rule recommendation number seven. I, I don't get it. You know, that, that, that's a contradiction to the utmost degree. So I believe strongly that the board made the right decision in this and a very courageous decision in their, in that respect. So moving forward, also Madam Chair and members of the board, what concerns me even more than what happened with the ballot question referendum was in the process that the board was almost denied their right to independent legal counsel. That, it should be a, a very big concern to the members of the public and to this board. And I think very strongly that should be a consideration for the public in the future that the board of elections and registration should have their own independent legal counsel that would not be held, so the, the board of elections and registration would not be held hostage in the future if there's ever a contentious issue or controversial issue like this one moving forward. So Madam Chair, members of the board, I applaud you. And I hope that moving forward, that the county will, you know, form, will actually do the right thing if they want to make any kind of changes or actually improvements in the charter, which there are, there are problems with the charter in terms of conflicts. I brought it up numerous times in the past. Have a government study question put on the ballot and let the people decide. And have a government study commission that's nonpartisan, independent, like you yourselves, to identify the problems and then have the public give input, just like it's done throughout this whole ordeal. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Karen?
Yes, I'd just like to thank you all for rejecting this ballot question. But I'd also like to ask a question of you. Going forward now, since September 11th is the deadline for writing these ballot questions. Is this totally rejected now? Counsel can't throw this back out? Or the judges and make you do this? Or is this done until primaries or however they figure it out? What happens now?
All I can say is we rejected the ballot question tonight.
Okay. And that's, that's all we could do right now then, right?
That's all we can, we are aware of at this time.
Okay. So you're not sure what's going to happen in a couple of days? How they're going to take this? Okay. Thank you for answering my question and thank you again for rejecting that ballot question. I greatly appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Let's try Anita Davis again. Anita, if you'd like to speak, you just need to unmute. There you go.
Okay. Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and board members for voting that measure down. I think it was biased. I don't know what's going to happen in the future, but I agree with Mr. Schramm. What was the purpose of this, this amendment? And how would this serve to benefit the voters of Luzerne County? And again, I enjoy living in a democracy. I love my country and God save America. Thank you for voting it down and I hope it sticks. And thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I've never heard so many people love us before. Is there anybody else? I don't see any other hands raised on the, on the Zoom platform and there are no phone lines. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Schramm, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Fissaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Opposition? None heard. Meeting is adjourned at 7:05 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. And if you'll just turn your microphones off.